Do you order? We have a full set of commissioners. All six. My title is our new permanent commissioner.
It was very wild to turn in my resignation and then also then be sworn in thirty seconds later.
Well, it's our rules, I guess.
Have to comply.
Let's talk about the minutes I was not here, but shall we? Are there any comments or questions about the minutes of our sixth? Hearing them will accept them as written. We have a public hearing that's open on application seventeen oh two of Barbara Foley, agent for the special exception for temporary liquor permit. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to that? Yes.
Come on up. She's very excited.
Yes, it's for our fundraiser, annual fundraiser that we have every year, the Ron Foley Foundation, which raises money for pancreatic cancer.
May I ask you to state your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry, Barbara Foley. And my address is one twenty five St. Rockland Street, Hartford, the foundation. What we're asking for the application would be at Follitt Farm, be here, the permit. And we have had this, this is our ninth annual bronze run coming up. We have raised over one twenty-five million dollars for pancreatic cancer research, awareness, and patient aid, direct patient aid. And so we hope that we can continue that tradition at Follitt Farm again this year.
Thank you. Commissioners, have any questions?
I think we were just waiting on a sign.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the primary reason that the commission held this meeting open was to see they signed affidavit that was to accompany the application. We are in receipt of that affidavit.
Okay.
We also.
Do we have everything we need?
You also had a draft motion that should be on the.
Yeah. I don't know if we have that one. I think we. Anyway, this is just the public hearing, so let's.
No, we're closing.
Well, we have to let the public speak. So is there anyone in the public who would like to speak? One, two, three, we asked them all, we polled them all, no takers, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a question that we closed the public hearing on application.
Seventeen oh two.
Seventeen oh two.
Second.
Second by Donna. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Okay. The public hearing is closed, now we can move on to old business and applications. And the first one is the application seventeen oh two of Barbara Foley. I think staff has recommended that this application be approved.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, in your packet, fire packet.
Online.
On Mike Liddon's report, there was an attachment A which recommended approval. You can read that.
Wasn't any special, nothing exceptional.
I'll read that for you. We have a recommendation for a motion to approve application seventeen dash zero two, application by Robert Pachacelli, agent for Barbara Foley, for special exception pursuant to Article ten, section eight of the Simsbury zoning regulations for a temporary liquor license for a one-day event at property located on Seventy-Five Park Road. The special exception is subject to the following conditions. One, the approval is for a one-day event to be held on May sixth, twenty seventeen. Two, the event start time is two thirty P.M. And three, the event end time is seven P.M.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make that as a motion. Are you second?
I'll second.
Second. Okay, any comments or questions on the application?
Is that okay?
Are those times exempt, are those times any problem for you?
She must heard, she said. The times, the two thirty to seven, he, that's, no.
Nobody's going to be before noon?
Pardon me? No.
Okay. And we've never had any difficulty in nine years that I know of.
No.
Great thing. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is the application seventeen oh three of LADA Land Planners, agent of the Simsbury Cemetery Association. We have, the commission, we've received revised plans, staff comments are. In here, there's a draft motion. Does staff recommend that we approve this?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, you are in receipt of a letter dated March twentieth, twenty seventeen, from Mike Liddon, Assistant Town Planner, regarding the review of a application by L.A. DEA for reinstallation of a columbarium wall and pavilion on property located on Plank Hill Road. And attachment A recommends a draft motion with five conditions of approval.
I have attachment A with three conditions of approval. It's been superseded by. It's okay. I haven't seen the whole letter.
For the question, because I'll go through the five conditions recommended, two conditions of approval.
Okay.
Item number one is an administrative zoning permit is required for all site improvements. Two, approval of the pavilion is based on plan titled Simsbury Cemetery Musevo, prepared by Matthews Cemetery Products, revision date June twentieth, twenty sixteen. Three, roof of proposed pavilion shall be a copper dome. Changes to the roofing material will require approval by the design review board. Four, for issuance of zoning and/or building permit, final fan shall be incorporated, excuse, shall incorporate the following details. A, the applicant must submit final design drawings for proposed retaining wall for the issuance of a zoning permit. Details and design calculations must be signed and sealed by a Connecticut professional engineer. B, drainage structure at the southeastern limit of disturbance cannot be elevated higher than twelve inches above existing elevation, or is to remain at current vertical location. C, erosion sedimentation control measures such as silk fencing, state hay bales, or inlet inserts ought to be provided at drainage structures at southeastern limit of disturbance. And five, minor field adjustments to grading and landscaping may be made based on field conditions upon a written approval from the town planner, who has been given the authority on behalf of the town zoning commission to act on their behalf.
Okay, questions on the conditions?
We saw this at the last meeting.
At the last meeting, okay. Quick, the erosion sediment control required by normal construction practice, that's not something we have to impose, is it?
Erosion sedimentation control is required by the zoning regulations on any site plan which recommends, well, it's deep now, but the bulletin is still D E Ps, bulletin with regards to soil erosion control. Again, we're really putting it in there for the purposes of our ability to make modifications based on site conditions. So if they say you need a hay bale, and there's a sufficient amount of exposed soil, and they made a hay bale and silk fence, we have the ability to require that with the applicable.
We have no objections. I understand why they put that specific one in there, it had to do with the drainage structure, that it's belts and suspenders, and I don't have any objections to that.
Okay. I'm ready to make a motion on this one.
Sure.
Somebody want to make the motion?
Uh, I think.
Text.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve application seventeen dash three of LADA PC Land Planners, agent for Simsbury Cemetery Association, for a site plan approval and installation of a columbarium wall and pavilion.
With all of the amendments.
Oh, with all of the amendments cited for the site plan, one through five.
I'll second. Okay. Secretary, have that?
Just for clarity, what Jackie was recommending in her motion is referenced as attachment A dated Monday, March twentieth, twenty seventeen.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further comments? Any, we have a second.
I second.
You second, yeah.
Second, Kevin. Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Okay. Passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time and efforts.
Okay. We are now on to application seventeen oh four, Saint Mary's Catholic Church. Someone here to speak to that?
I'm Bill Hayden, I'm the business manager for Saint Mary's Catholic Church, across the street on Meadow. The, the application is simply to extend the use of temporary classrooms on the left side of the school building. Those classrooms were installed in two thousand and fourteen in response to security changes that came, that were given rise to by the Ivy Town event. We did a security assessment and recommendations for changes were made, but that required us to use additional space that we didn't have on site. We're in the process of doing a, well, we have done a sort of master planning process and now have a construction, a capital project that we're moving forward with, and we'll be back in touch with that. We would expect that final programming is being done this month, schematic design will start this month, and we would expect that we will be able to be in construction around about this time next year and complete. So we think that a two-year extension will be more than enough time to have the particles in place, removed in less than two years.
Okay, now the actual construction and site plan has not been approved yet, is that right?
Correct. They have not applied for any construction associated with the addition at their existing facility. We have had preliminary discussions with the, with the school at the staff level.
Well, the staff had made a recommendation here on March sixteenth that we might consider adding an extension to the motion, their provision for an extension.
Yeah, three years plus two years maybe.
I think I would stick with the two years, seeing that they.
You've been in business well, in this.
That they did it initially without any approval.
Oh.
No, they did it, they got approval.
No, they came in after it was done.
Well, it is, it's going to be two years, and they'll make it within the two years if nothing goes wrong, and so on. So I think it's, I don't think there's any need to punish them, in my opinion, I don't know what you people think. And, so I, if we're ready to act on this, somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve application seventeen oh four. Well, Bill Hayden, business manager, agent for Saint Mary's Catholic Church Corporation, owner for site amendment for extension of two years for the portable classroom building on the north side of the school and property located at nine forty-six Meadow Street. The site plan amendment approval is subject to the following conditions. One, the approval is for the portable classroom buildings on the north side of the school. Two, approval for the retaining of the portable classroom buildings for two years with the ability to request a two-year extension, expiration date will be March twentieth, twenty nineteen, without extension granted, in parentheses. And three, request for extensions to be made in writing to the zoning commission.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? They really have to come back for an extension anyway if they, if they want it, so.
Just in writing already.
It's just, it's in writing already. Right. And the only question would be whether, I don't have any real question, I was thinking about requiring the removal of the thing, once the site has been, once the building has been built, but I think that's.
I think, Mr. Chairman, what would be perhaps most appropriate is when you, when and if you grant any zoning permits for additional classroom space there, that those permits be conditioned upon the removal of the temporary classrooms on or about the time the certificate of occupancy is issued for the others.
Okay.
There's a lot of power in that certificate of occupancy.
Sure.
They would be removed before they could be occupied, the rest of the building.
Any other comments? Want to do vote? All in favor?
Aye.
In favor, next one.
Closed. Motion carries six, nothing. Thank you. Application seventeen oh five, Ernie.
Maggi.
Maggi?
Yes, sir.
Stop and Shop, agent, Simsbury Commons North, this is for a greenhouse, temporary greenhouse. I think you did have a three-year permit previously.
This time we applied for another three-year permit, and last meeting, one of the requirements were to have a letter from our company specifically telling when the take down of the greenhouse would be, and we agreed that April first, never be erected before April first, and it'll always be taken down by July eighteenth. We use July eighteenth as a date, because July fourth is usually when the gardens and things like that for outside mums and all kinds of things like that sell out, so it gives us two weeks to make sure it's done. So it'll be a parking lot prior to April first, and it'll be back to a parking lot the day of July eighteenth.
This is where all the snow is now?
Yeah. That's one of the places.
Half the parking space over there now, a bit full of snow.
Okay, I don't think, does anybody have any questions or comments for the applicant? Probably ready to make a motion on that.
I'll make a motion.
They've given this one in the back of hearing.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve application seventeen oh five of Ernie Maggi, Stop and Shop, agent, Simsbury Commons North, E.A.L.L.C., owner for a site plan amendment for the placement of a temporary greenhouse on the property located at four nine eight Bushy Hill Road. Site plan amendment is subject to the following conditions of approval. The season for the greenhouse will be April first to July eighteenth. The approval is valid for three years. A zoning compliance permit is required for the installation of the temporary structure.
I'll second.
Second by Jackie. Comments?
Can you just clarify that the compliance permit is required each year?
Yeah, correct.
Good clarification, sir.
Got that? Mr. Secretary? Clerk, I guess, sir. Clicking the bullet. Yes. Further comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? None? It's not in the passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I can take my wife off to dinner.
That's why she's here.
Glad we can help.
Actually, we should look, if you don't know, they will be shutting down hot now.
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, really, tonight?
Yeah.
This evening, yes.
Just parts of it, because they're moving a big piece of equipment through the center of town. Room forty-four, sadly.
Okay, now, application seventeen oh six of Kevin Kowalski, Fire Marshal.
Um, Mr. Chairman, with regards to this application, we're still awaiting a report from the conservation commission, so staff is recommending that you table this item to your April third meeting.
Okay. Your motion? To table?
Aye, move that we table application seventeen oh six, Kevin Kowalski, until our meeting on April third, by seven o'clock.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Okay. Found a new business, new application. Farm to family, Thomas Simsbury, for a site plan amendment for the construction of two high tunnels at the community farm. Is nobody here to talk to that?
We're in receipt of it.
Was there somebody here on this tunnel?
No.
Well, again, Mr. Chairman, we're in receipt of the application, it's a ministerate of nature on their sheer site plan approval process, you have sixty-five days to take action. We did have to refer the site plan and application to the town to be granted under state statute. They have thirty-five days to respond, and our recommendation is you table this to your April third meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we table application seventeen oh seven, Farm to Family, agent, Thomas Simsbury, owner of a site plan amendment to our April third meeting at seven o'clock.
Second.
Okay. Second by Donna. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Six, nothing, it's tabled. Okay, general commission business?
Mr. Chairman, with regards to discussion of new and ongoing projects, we have been working with the Silverman Group, they did attend the design review commission's meeting two weeks ago, with an updated rendering for the assisted living. Design review had some additional comments. We received revisions to those plans this past Friday, available in my office if anyone is interested in looking at those. But they are slowly addressing all of the outstanding issues that were held as comments through a design review. Design review did cancel their meeting this evening due to a lack of a quorum, seemed to be a number of people who were traveling this week. We potentially anticipate an application from Silverman sometime in April, under your Form Base Code for the Hartford. With regards to the zoning regulation revisions, those are ongoing. I have also sought additional funding in next year's budget to continue this in hopes of be able to keep Glenn Chalder on board as our consultant for this project. I don't know if anyone has any questions regarding any development in town or the zoning regulations at this point in time.
Any other questions? No word on Big Y, any change there?
No word on, the status of Big Y has not changed. They still retain ownership of the site. With regards to item B, workforce housing moratorium, was discussed about potentially modifying the language to allow an existing applicant to continue to apply under the workforce housing. And as we discussed this in the last two weeks, I'd like to be able to have a further discussion with the chairman. My thoughts were if we modify the language, in essence, in the next two months, we still have to deal with the moratorium. And in the, in a discussion, if you were to eliminate the workforce housing zoning regulations, although we changed them to allow someone to apply, if you eliminate them, what regs do they apply for amendments to if you eliminated the old regulations? So I'd like to work with the chairman about, as one of the manners to resolve the moratorium is to actually create regulations for the workforce housing, a workforce housing zone, which would include a map amendment. And you would amend the existing zoning regulations to create a workforce housing zone on Hoskins Road. You would modify your existing regs to fit that site and that approval. And then perhaps you would discuss the potential lapse of the workforce housing overlay zone. So you would, you know, you've already landed the zone, we would make sure that that zone remained its entirety as it's associated with the approved plans. But that would kind of resolve maybe the moratorium issue going forward, and also resolve that potential developer's request to slightly modify the complexity of the units, the single-family duplex attached, detached, and apartments. I don't know if anyone has any questions. Hoping, looking at the regulations, of simplistic approach, or it may not, but we'll be able to navigate through that.
So that assumes that we're not interested in having workforce housing anywhere else?
That's, that, that would be the assumption that staff would recommend it would not be advisable to advance the moratorium for another six months, which would be pushing twenty-four months. Does not lose sight of the fact that you may want to entertain workforce housing in other locations.
But on the map, not.
Right.
Or, or, again, you could have an overlay zone, or sometimes we used a floating zone, which is similar to an overlay zone, except you tie it to something. That the zone may land so long as it's located on a state highway, or has frontage to a state highway. It may land only in an R forty zone, not an R eighty zone, and may land only in a Simsbury Center code. You know, so we can develop parameters with regards to its location, because in all the feedback I've received from commission members to date, most of the issues with the regulations are locational based. There's actually language right now being contemplated by the legislature under eight dash thirty G that actually looks at locational issues, as well as density. That may limit the ability of an eight thirty G to more than double the density of the underlying zone. So you can't, you can't go into an R eighty zone, five thousand square foot lots, you could go in an R eighty zone and propose forty thousand square foot lots, but not five thousand square foot. You can go in an R forty zone and propose twenty thousand square foot lots, but not five or ten thousand square foot lots. There's also, I think, twenty or more bills associated with eight dash thirty G, so we're not quite sure what will come out of that committee.
Are there a bunch of towns that are?
Is that the only one I made up?
That's the only, I got four to plan of development today.
Are there a bunch of towns struggling with eight thirty G and workforce housing overlay zones?
Some of the difficulties associated with it is when they establish the ten percent clause, it, I don't want to say it, it didn't account for the fact that there were historic development trends in one hundred and sixty-nine municipalities that they didn't give you credit for. So you could be a, you know, a historic mill town in a rural setting, where twenty-five percent of your housing stock is associated in these villages, but because they're not deed restricted or financed in a certain way, they're given no weight. So there are a lot of small towns in Connecticut, or mid-sized towns, who were taken back a little bit with regards to the formula. So there was proposed legislation to eliminate eight dash thirty J, just to take it off the books. There were others that were more targeted, that, you know, kind of if you live by a river near the mill in a town of less than five thousand two hundred and thirty-two people, that you weren't.
That was established before eighteen seventy-two.
That was established before 1872.
There were a few bills like that in front of committee, and Mike disinforms me that may perhaps one bill has been forwarded to planning and development for discussion purposes, and it's one associated with limitations on density, limitations on location. They also give you a little more credit to perhaps be eligible for a four-year moratorium as well as some exemptions if you have land associated with transit-oriented development. So there are a few avenues perhaps available if that moves forward. But it still leaves the underlying aspect of the thirty G available to the developers. It changes the parameters.
And other potential eight thirty G applications that might be in process now or in litigation now?
They would still be held to the code or law when they...
At the time of application?
Correct.
Have there been successfully eight thirty G developments in Connecticut?
Have there been successful ones? There have been ones that have gone through the process that haven't been appealed, and there have been a number that have gone through the process and have been appealed. And most instances where commissions deny eight dash thirty G, they have been overturned by the courts.
We have that here, and yet the developers not finding it economic to proceed, it seems.
I do not know all of the information associated with the reasons of why that project hasn't proceeded. I mean, there could be economic ramifications of Ken Simsberry's and the economics of Connecticut support 296 homes with a significant amount of infrastructure associated with the development of those homes as long as well as the price associated with the raw land.
Well, if you look at all of the testimony from these people, developers that have come in, they said the shift is to apartments. You know, there's a... Look at how many apartments we're building. Nobody's going to come in and build houses.
You put 290 units on the market for sale, Carson Way's selling between five and eight a year. Even if you did 10, that's 29 years. Even if you did 29, that's 10 years.
But that's a different model, too, because those are maintenance-free, really. You don't do your sidewalk. They're condo homes.
But we have less than 10 single-family home... You know, take Carson Way out, and there's only a scattering of single-family housing permits being...
No, my question was, is the program... Is this scheme that was set up in Connecticut been successfully implemented in a lot of different towns? Are there a lot of developments that have been done under that that have been...
There have been a number of developments that have been successfully brought to market as a result of eight dash thirty G.
Maybe it has landed in an industrial zone on the town, fly it, and it went through.
New Canaan, Greenwich, South Berry, North Stonington, Ledger, Wallenford. There have been a number around the state. Just quick ones off the top of my head. Some wouldn't use it as successful because it's still on the market.
Yes. How we on to the executive session? Need a motion to go into executive session to discuss pending litigation between the zoning commission and Mr. Schoenhardt, and we'd like to ask Mr... Merton?
Oh, Mr. Merton.
We'd like to ask Mr. Rabbit and Mr. Glenn to be included in... As commission staff in our executive session.